I hereby call the meeting to order in my last meeting. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Um, can we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Would you like to take the reins back, Mr. Kelly? It's mine tonight. Woo! But um, I don't have an agenda in front of me because we didn't print them. Um, do we have the budget presentation is first or we have our action items? Okay. Does someone want to? I seriously, we don't have modem folders tonight. And we don't have the motions in front of us. Does Mr. Kelly? Would you like to make the motion, Mr. Kelly?
Uh, it's a long one, and I actually practiced it a little bit. So let's see if I can read it.
Excellent.
My best. This is the social studies textbook. The motion approve the new socials, new social studies textbook, comprised of government comparative government for the AP course by Karen Wapples.
Well, the second, second by Ms. Tersch. Um, Ms. Caraballo, would you like to give us a quick reminder for those who may not recall what we're talking about?
Thank you. This is an AP book that is replacing the current one that we have for that particular class, which is a one semester class which begins in January. And it was reviewed by students, parents, teachers, myself. And it was very, very robust, I thought. There are many sections of it that I did not understand. I can tell you that. But I liked all the supports that it gave for the students and for the teachers. It's online or it's in hardcover, and I think that's a really good choice for kids.
Thank you. Um, board members, any questions, discussion, Mr. Kittle?
I was the holdup on this one and uh, last time and I was given access to the textbook online and uh, reviewed it more sufficiently. And I think it's fine. Some of the things I was worried about in the land of textbooks in our school system, this is not the hill I want to die on. So I think it's an acceptable uh, book to approve.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? Ms. Stowe?
Well, but because of you, Cody, I actually read the Brexit section. So I thank you for that. And I now know a little bit more.
Yes.
I also know that you're only four hours ahead of us right now. So you have a special moment and so it'll end this weekend.
I'm so happy to be only four hours instead of five.
Um, anyone else? You gonna call the question? All those in favor of the adopting of the textbook motion, raise your hand? All opposed? All abstentions? Seven, zero, one. Ms. Kolski, want to say why you're abstaining? Okay.
Students will be very happy. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. It was actually a lot of fun serving on the committee. I was on it as well. Um, the next action item is the motion, I think, I'm gonna do this off to my a motion to approve the school calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five GPS school year as presented. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Kolski. Dr. Jones, would you give us a little presentation after our discussion?
Sure. I'm I'm gonna walk through some of the decision making and why the calendar came back before you uh, the way that it was at the last meeting because it's not because we didn't spend time on it. Uh, Mr. Dumeeko, Dr. Carabillo, we've all tried to really work with this calendar. Um, the first and foremost, one of the reasons we made the change during that first week this school year was exactly what you heard um, GEA talking about at our last meeting in that teachers are really, time is is just precious. And at the beginning of the year, it's hard getting their rooms ready. And it's hard also to be ready for the school year when you have so much professional development happening. And we have a lot right now that we have implemented. So adding that extra day allowed us a fantastic full day of professional development. I think it's probably one of the better ones we've had uh, coming back to the school year. Plus, we had another half day and our teachers still had ample time to get their rooms ready. And the feedback was it made a difference in the classroom. So we did consider, could you move a professional day just to September? But don't you want teachers to have their professional development to be ready for the year and not teach a month and have to wait like this year on Dibbles? Where they would have been learning to do that after the school year already started. It's just much more difficult. So that was why we didn't move that. Um, also, we we did look at, could we go back um, to earlier for a week and bring the teachers back? Our summer school does not finish until the sixteenth. And again, we do get out late in June. We have a couple of days. We start summer school right after July fourth. So it's not like we have a big gap. We don't wait. Then that gives us one week for all of our buildings that are utilized in the summer um, to get them ready to bring students back and they are packed. Um, and we, from a facility standpoint, they need every day they can get from waxing floors to whatever it is they need to do right up until the day teachers return. Um, so that was the pressure and moving it, moving it back. Also, I think it's important to note because the board doesn't usually get into the weeds on you know, summer planning and what buildings are utilized, but we are under a lot of pressure with our buildings. We have a lot of heavy construction projects going on right now that have been closing buildings. Um, you know, I I would guess right now, we already know that Western likely could be closed if they're doing heavy, heavy work. Uh, GHS will be closed, HMEV could be closed if we're doing a large HVAC project there. Um, I don't know what's gonna happen with OG. That building could be out of commission. Um, and with JC doing the entryway and it depends what they've planned, that building could be closed. So by the time, and we work with our partners in town, which right now Park and Rec doesn't have access to Eastern Grivitch, uh, the Eastern Civic Center. And um, so I have to work with them and because we try to help them have space. There are kids in town programs. Um, then on top of that, we're also right now working with Boys and Girls Club, who again is completely out of their building. Um, we're working with them not only during the school year, but we'll be working with them again in the summer. So there's not a lot of building flexibility to move things around. And we didn't want to touch, uh, we heard this loud and clear, February. Everybody wants that extra day. You know, we could actually adjust when we do our February break, gain a day back. That did not seem like that was well received. Um, and we want to have an April break. So I think when people compare us to other districts, other districts don't have those two full breaks. We're very fortunate in Greenwich. I think people like it. Uh, a lot of the districts only do like an extra long weekend. So that's part of it. The last thing I'll just mention is that I looked at, okay, if we press it back in June and and we were going two extra days in June, what would that do? Well, right now, we already go to the last full week uh, of June. We get out on the Wednesday if we need our snow days, which we know in Connecticut could be likely. If we add two days, we're now into the twenty-seventh. We've given ourselves one day, which is June thirtieth, to meet the mandate if something goes wrong. And our teacher contracts end on June thirtieth. So I mean, it's just, we've looked at every way that we can. That's why we're bringing it back to you this way. We're happy to uh, do whatever the board tells us to do.
Thank you, Tony. Questions? Ms. Stowe?
So I have only one question. I think um, well, as you know, I was in favor of it being before Labor Day for especially for the high school APs and many other reasons. But um, moving it up, like I just remember it being years ago where it was started on a Wednesday. Now I know the answer to that is because then that puts the teachers right into the prior week.
You're talking about moving just the back, back a day?
Yeah, like no, moving up from Friday, like Friday start to Wednesday start.
Well, there are two ways you can do that. One is you take away um, that professional day that we just added to help our teachers have the time and get prepared. And we think it made a difference this year. Uh, the second way would be to go back to that prior week, which means again, we're we're bringing our facilities back online, giving them four days, not instead of five. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but it but it matters. We only give them a week um, to get those buildings that have been used all summer. And that's very difficult.
I know. I just, okay, I just would love it to be a little earlier rather than it just seems like such a waste to just do it on Friday.
I'm gonna be really honest. I I I can't remember who said it at the last meeting for sure, but it's actually great from an educator standpoint because your first day is really setting routines. You're giving them the rules, you know, how do you ask to go to the bathroom depending on what grade you're in? Um, so by the time they come back on Tuesday, they're hitting the ground running. And uh, you know, I I see it as a real benefit, not as as a bad, bad thing.
For the record, that was me. Ms. Karen Hirsch?
So I just had a quick question. I mean, I I'm was not a fan of starting it on that Friday for many reasons, but I wasn't a fan of pushing it after the weekend either. So I was one of those that had a a quick question. So you know, in the, in the um, calendar that we had, I know you said we added an extra professional learning day and and you know, the more professional learning that's, you know, we can give our, you know, engage our our teachers in is fantastic. But my quick question was, you know, on the calendar here, it says first day for all teachers on the twenty-sixth. I know many teachers then use that data unpack their classrooms and and set and organize things. But are we also offering professional development on that? Because we have two days of professional learning after that, on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth.
So we have a very regulated calendar. They all submit them uh, to Mr. Dumeeko. Um, when it says professional learning, those are planned by the curriculum team. Um, and they're very, very specific to the work that we're doing as part of our strategic work. Um, and then they had this year, like for elementary, it was basically was a twelve hours mark over those four days so that they would have time to actually get books put away, all the new materials, uh, be able to set up their classrooms. So it's very regulated.
Right. So that's first day for all teachers, which is twenty-sixth.
Well, you still have a half day of just mandated meetings that teachers do. So on the first day, a lot of those are actually meetings with their principals. And they have a lot of things they have to go through annually every year. And we send them that list.
That was what I was trying to get at because I was like, if they're setting up their classrooms and it's a half a day, could flip that and do a half a day with the orientation because that's a half a day. But if you're telling me that the full day is taken, Mark's nodding, the full day is taken up with uh, meetings and other requirements. It's not just unpacking and setting up a a classroom, which I know can also take a lot of time. But all right. Well, that that kills one idea I had. All right.
Ms. Custon?
So I I don't care how we do it, but I don't care whether we start on Tuesday or start on Thursday, just not starting on a Friday. Is there a way, I know Election Day used to be professional development. Now it's just a day off. Can we swap the March tenth Professional Development Day to Election Day? And like how, if we, if we take away a day off? I don't, does that work? Does that help?
No, we're talking about instructional day versus a teacher day. But the other thing is, we do not uh, want to have people in school, especially next year in a national election. Um, you know, on Election Day. We did try, was it two years ago, doing it fully virtual? And it was not the quality that we need for our staff.
Are you saying because the building wasn't, was it too full?
Uh, no, there's, there are a couple of reasons. You know, you you actually, even our registered voters ask us not to be in school. They prefer that. And we always have worked well with them, but just even from a parking standpoint, you know, you think about like New Lebanon's parking place. The the staff fill up the parking there. And then we tried relocating one year, just even having even more at the high school. Um, but that didn't really work either. So there's, there's just so many different issues. But GEA also had a specific request. They did not uh, want to be having professional development on Election Day.
So what if we roll the dice on our snow days? And we only have four instead of five, and then we don't have to start on that. We could start on the day after Labor Day.
That would be two days because then you have the sixth and ninth grade orientation. So you're not just rolling the dice for one, you know. Farmers Almanac says it's gonna be a tough one. No, but that, but but the point is if we don't have enough snow days, then we end up taking those from April break anyway. So we're, it's like a double edged sword.
I give up.
So.
Ms. Hirsch?
One last question. So you know, if we move forward with it this way, we we know that there's a lot of frustration and opposition for starting the school for the, you know, all of our students on that Friday uh, or and some on Thursday. Is there, I know we're late in the game for this year, but can, is there stuff that conversation we can start now for next year? The next year's calendar to to see other ways around this. If we do it for one more year and parents are like, fine. But if not, and they're frustrated, I'd love to be able to get ahead of the game, be proactive.
I have in the past actually surveyed the community and surveyed staff. And I bet you if I surveyed them and gave them some of the options, like you would have to lose February, they probably would choose exactly this calendar once they understood the situation better. Um, we could always get more community input. And PTA is great. I mean, PTA always talks about the calendar as well. And I think, you know, ideally, we just wish we had, you know, more time, but you just don't.
Mike?
Oh, so I I I remain skeptical, but I'm, I I appreciate your, your thinking things through. And one was certainly willing to give um, the administration the 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 benefit of of the doubt here because you you've explored all the options and things like that. And if you think this, this makes sense, the um, I did attempt um, a very unscientific poll to the community. I put it out there on, uh, I put it out there on um, social media. And um, I think I got one comment. So.
I'm, I, I.
You did not comment.
I didn't even see it.
Well, I I went to Greenwich Moms. So me, me and the Greenwich Moms apparently, they didn't want to talk to me. Have connections. Um, so in any event, so I I I like Karen's point of uh, continuing to think through this. Um, we realize it is an imperfect system. I do remain skeptical about the Professional Learning Day, the half day, the Friday before Memorial Day weekend about the level of productivity there, but so be it. We'll, we'll, we'll cross that bridge next year.
Cody?
How um, how many times in the last, you know, X number of years, pick whatever info we have, have we gone over the five snow day um, reserve?
Yeah, I would have to go back in and look. And it's hard for me in the five years I've been here because in COVID, we could be virtual where now we can't. So you have a little more flexibility, like if it was um, to actually count a school day, where now we wouldn't be able to count that school day. You just have to be out. Um, but we definitely have. But I can also get that data. I just can't, don't have it tonight. But it's not unusual for us to have, you know, a hard winter. And quite frankly, a lot of times it just depends um, uh, what's happening at four thirty in the morning, and I have no earthly idea. And I make a bad call and we wasted a day. Um, and that happens um, almost every year because I have the, you know, weather service, I have the police, I have, you know, emergency management, everybody's trying to help, but we don't know what it's gonna do by five or five thirty. And I have to make the call um, because of buses and public works um, and park and rec, clearing parking lots.
And Cody, we've had a couple of years, just by background, where we've lost an entire week, like Superstorm Sandy, Hurricane Irene. We had the treepocalypse, as my kids call it. So we've had a couple where you're out three days and you don't have a lot of cushion. Karen?
Yeah, Kristina, I was just gonna add, it's not just snow, it's, it's ice. It's, you know, I can remember we woke up one morning to an ice storm there. You couldn't drive, you couldn't even leave your driveway without crashing into something. So I think, you know, it's, it presents a a different situation. It's not, yes, I think we'll all say, I can't even remember the last time we got true snowflakes that were sled worthy in Greenwich for a while now. But it's not just that. And also, I think, and Dr. Jones will can say whether or not, but it's also based upon, you know, some decisions, I think in part are based upon other districts and what's happening around our community. While Greenwich may not get the deluge of snow that is anticipated, other communities, surrounding communities are, which impacts the amount of teachers that are actually coming to school that day, which means even if we are having school, nobody's showing up. So there's no education actually happening because teachers are coming from out of Greenwich to get here. And I, we have to factor that, or not we, the collective we, but Dr. Jones has to take that into account when making those decisions.
I absolutely do. And we have um, on snow, on snow calls, uh, all the superintendents in the region are on the same call early in the morning uh, with the same, almost all of them. There might be one district that uses the same meteorologist.
Cody, do you still have your hand up? Or is that a new hand up?
Question, sorry, just um, uh, did COVID change any of the way we approach snow days? Like, are we, do we now have the capability to do school from home on a snow or a wind or a treepocalypse day?
Um, you know, I'll be really honest, it should have, but it did not. And I think the reason why the state made the decision um, in the end was that from a chronic attendance standpoint, they want kids in school. And I think they just wanted to really force everybody to get back. We were in school. But you know, there were districts in twenty twenty-one that didn't go back until the very end of the year at all. And so I think from that standpoint, they just wanted us in school. And so there really is not much flexibility at all.
Oh, Tony, is that just, I I'm ignorant on this one. Is like, even if we wanted to have, it's not a capability question. Even if we wanted to let kids do school from home on a snow day, the state government doesn't allow us to?
That's correct.
Ah, I love that theme. Same thing all the time with Hartford.
Played right into that, Cody. Well done. Any other questions? Karen looks like she's jumping to the mic. She want.
No, I was just gonna say, can we call the question?
I'm happy to call the question. Um, um, all in favor of the motion? All in opposition? Abstentions? So six, one, one. It passes. Thank you all.
Why?
No.
Would you like to tell us why, Joe?
No, because Kathleen said she didn't want to.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you all. Okay. Um, next item is I believe Dr. Jones has a lengthy budget presentation for us.
I do. And I would suggest that you might want to sit on the front row so you can actually see the screen. I'm just making sure he's ready. Okay. Good evening, Chair Kelly, Vice Chair Downey, members of the board, community and staff. I am delighted to be here tonight to present the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget. Just as a reminder, every year, as we're preparing for the budget, um, there are a lot, but there are many, many things that we do. But first of all, we go in and we look at our academic needs. This year, it was very important to look at the strategic plan. What is the work we're trying to accomplish? We look at our previous and current budgets. We analyze our enrollment projection data, which comes in every October. We also look at staffing adjustments across the district, every department, pre-K through twelve plus. We look at our uh, estimated fixed costs. I think the board knows and you'll see shortly, one of the largest drivers is always salaries for us. And we look at local, state and federal funding information. This year, there were legislative impacts that are impacting the budget. Some of the budget demands, uh, we really have to look at where is the budget insufficient? And we know right now our substitute budget is a challenge. We'll talk about that in a little while. Special education expenses, um, we're going for an interim in just a matter of weeks uh, to the BET and the RTM just for this current year. Our facilities overtime pay, utilities continue to increase. And also unpredictable kindergarten enrollment the last two years. And as a reminder, we are in a twelve month budget process. It's literally all year long. And we have moved the capital budget up, which I know the board is aware of, the community may not uh, be. It's already been approved. And I think it's, we are all very supportive of separating capital and operating. That's worked really well. Um, one thing that is different this year is you'll notice in October in blue where it says BET guidelines. There were no guidelines this year. Um, there were none given. So um, in looking at the strategic plan, there are some things that we need to accomplish within that plan. Of course, our special education action plan, we've made a huge commitment to our community to continue to do that work. Um, we also need uh, to continue the work with our strong literacy programming and support across all of our schools uh, for consistency. We have been implementing mathematics across all of our schools. We have big ideas now from kindergarten all the way through high school. Uh, we want to continue to strengthen the home to school connection, student belonging, and also the working environment for teachers and staff. And again, I want to thank the board for the calendar you just passed. That last item, it really did make a difference. We have not changed our mission and vision from our previous strategic plan. We still want to educate all of our students to the highest academic level. We want them to reach and expand their potential. And of course, we want them to be productive, responsible, ethical, creative and compassionate members of society. We are very focused on our SBA ELA results, and this is just giving you an idea of three through eight. But again, the budget needs to be reflective of the work that we are doing and where we're investing our dollars is where we want to see the growth that matches our strategic plan. And this is a prime example where we have invested and how we've used our budget dollars. When you look at the left, what you're seeing is kindergarten, and that's twenty seventeen through last year. We have invested heavily in foundations, which is our phonics program. And the orange is before we invested in our phonics program, the blue is after. Our likelihood of uh, early readers has really increased in early childhood. And you can see the same thing on the right hand side. It's a good investment of the funds in our budget. When we look at our SBA math results, three through eight, again, uh, we're a second year of implementation and we have already grown uh, five percent. We're really pre-pleased with that and very proud of that. We want to see that continuing to trend up. And I really picked this slide out because I just want to point out the amazing work that's been happening in middle school. We have invested, which I know the board knows, in really looking at the advanced science in middle school. We really reworked that curriculum from a uh, standpoint of making sure it's robust. And we have grown by fourteen percentage points. And that is just phenomenal. And that's a credit to the entire middle school. Our AP success rate uh, scoring three, four or five continues to climb. And again, that's what we want to see because a score of three, four or five for most universities will give college credit. Trending in the right direction. When we look at college readiness, again, where we were higher this year than we have been uh, last year, the year before that at ninety-one percent. And last year, we gave more AP tests than we did the year before. And that's happened over the last several years. This is an area that is a focus in the strategic plan. We just got this metric about three days ago. Um, ninety-five point nine percent for graduation. We want to see that go up. And that's work we have to do over the next few years in our strategic plan. We're very proud again of our survey data um, on homeschool connection. What do our families really truly believe about our schools? Do they feel like we're listening and that we're supporting the needs of their children? In twenty-nine, nineteen, twenty, we were sixty-seven percent. This last year, that was up to eighty-seven percent. And we have a very high return rate on our survey. Um, that's twenty percentage points. Student belonging is up. Um, I will tell you, it's a different at elementary, middle and high. It's always the most difficult at high school. Uh, and that's not unusual. But again, we're proud that it's going up. We want to see that continue to go up. And also the same way with our staff and our school climate, it's going up, but it's not where we would like it to be. But I think you did hear it our last meeting again from GEA compared to most districts, not only in this region, but across the country. We actually have very strong results, but we want to continue to see it increase. But we're not all about um, test scores. We have so much to celebrate in Greenwich. Uh, if you look at the top, the STEM research and our students that went with Andy Bermonte to Washington DC. I know they're so impressive when they come before us. Uh, down on the bottom, you know, having the quality of music teacher that's playing with the Temptations and the Four Tops. We had the Connecticut Teacher of the Year over on the right. We could literally wallpaper an entire wall with all of the celebrations um, that happen within our schools. Now let's look a little bit of the student demographic and enrollment information. This year, we have eight thousand six hundred and eleven um, students enrolled in Greenwich Public Schools. Kindergarten enrollment is typically driven by birth rate in Greenwich. And this year, we were a hundred and one students above projection just in kindergarten. And the increase was largely due to families moving into GPS for kindergarten. Another trend I think that's important to note is across Connecticut, the birth rate is tending to either flatten or go down. But you'll notice in Greenwich, on that far right, it's starting to go back up in Greenwich. And these are children that are actually born in Greenwich. But what's really. But what's really impacting us, not only the birth rate going up, but when you look at that orange trend line across the top, that's what we call in migration. Those are all the housing sales where people are moving in with little three-year-olds and two-year-olds that are coming to kindergarten. This is the kindergarten replacement. We started showing this about two or three years ago, just to help people understand. When they were talking about, oh, enrollment's going down, what was happening in that orange band? We had large classes of graduating classes that were over 700. And what you had coming into kindergarten were class sizes of 500. So it was just the seniors leaving, small kindergartners coming in. So we saw a big shift over those three years. That trend is now is waning. And so when you look down in the yellow where we were this year, you'll notice the senior class and the kindergarten class, there's 57 a student difference. So we're not in that same trend anymore. This is student enrollment history over time. Goes all the way back, you know, to the 1970s, you can see where we had 11,000 students. We're nowhere near that large right now. And in 88, 89, we were down to 6,453. We're still much larger than that. But what you will notice is over on that far right-hand side, again, we are leveling off. And this is what we look like now when you look at our projections. And if you look closely at our projections, that doesn't mean every single school looks like that. As a matter of fact, Old Greenwich is one of the buildings that probably before we can get their project done, they're expected to grow by about 85 more students. We're not sure where we're going to put them. Preschool growth continues to grow. And this is just showing you, when you go back to 2012, preschool is federally mandated, and these are only the students that are qualifying through eligibility process. But again, for every six students right now, you need a new classroom. And this is a reminder, I know this board, because you're an experienced board, you know this. But if you go back to 2019, 2020, we used to have a class of 15, and we would have four special needs students in that class. In order to try to slow the growth, because we were growing so quickly, we went to six special needs and nine peer spots, general education. And what that has done is it slowed the number of sections that we have needed for pre-K, because we can have a few more students in each section. Next year, we are anticipating we could be up to 17.5 sections of preschool. Now, keep in mind, we could fill an entire Parkway Plus with just our pre-K program. They are filling space all across the district. And we have also saved around seven teacher positions and 16.8 positions, well over a million dollars by change in the model. For our English language learners, on the left, it's 2019, and on the right is 2023, and those are both from October counts. So it looks like we've gone up about 59 students from 2019. But when you look at the next chart and you look at 2019, and then you look at 2020 right next to that, when we brought our, when we opened schools in the fall of 2020, we lost about 65 of our EL students. And then we started climbing again each year. And so when you look at it from 2020 to 2023 of October, we've actually increased 119 students just in the last few years. Our students qualifying for free are reduced. Again, this is a very much a COVID-impacted bar graph because what you see in 2021 was when all of the lunches were free by the federal government. So it was very difficult to get families to fill out the paperwork. It's starting to trend back up now, especially this year, because the paperwork is required in order to qualify. When we look at our special education population, again, this is looking from October of 2019 to October of 2023. We have gained 100, 189 students. 65 of those were just since last year. And our special education population continues to grow. We've gone from 10 to 11% up to 14. But keep in mind that the state is actually right around 17%. Our K5 classrooms over time, we've tried to shift. When we had that kind of three-year window, when we were going down a little bit, we were able to reduce some sections. We've reduced 19 sections going back to 16, 17, but you don't really notice it as much. Hmm. Just a minute here. Thank you. So when we look at our K5 classrooms over time, we are down right now 19 sections. But keep in mind, we were supposed to go down two more this year. But because of our over-projection K5 of 100, about 150 students overall, and again, 100-plus of those in kindergarten, we could not reduce the additional two sections. So when we look at some of our historical budget trends, what you're seeing here is very early on, going back to 2002, 2003, we were actually funded at levels that were funding the contractual increases. So we were able to sustain, we were able to have professional development funds, we were able to purchase curriculum. When you start looking at going forward, right around that 2012, 2013, we have been funded at a level that has been so low, we have not been able to meet contractual obligations. And what that means is that every one of those years, to make those budgets work, you're going inside the school district budget and having, you're looking for things to reduce or delete. And that's not a bad exercise, but we got to the point by 2019 where, you know, we had math books that were 12 and 13 years old, and they were falling apart, and we didn't have consistency at all 11 elementaries or in our middle schools. And we're working really hard on trying to reestablish that, but I think this board fully understands that if you're not meeting contractual obligations, you've got to make some really heavy decisions and big cuts. So some of the budget drivers, of course, special education tuition is challenging. It is for everybody in the state. We already, again, we're going for an interim. When you look at that fourth column over, it says 5.5 plus 1.2. That's the interim that will be in front of the BET in just a few weeks, which will put that number for outplacement at 6.7 million. Just keep in mind, in that 1.2 million, just under a million of that was from a legislative change. It was something we couldn't budget for last year. We didn't know it was going to happen out of legislature. And again, when you look at it down on the bottom, we're pretty well leveling out, we hope, for next year. But again, sometimes it's a legislative change that can make a difference. In our utilities budget, natural gas is going up 32.7%. Our water service is increasing 14%. Our heating oil at Parkway, that's the one building we have on the oil, 7.8%. And then, of course, we have some ever-source finance loans, which puts pressure on electric. And as a reminder, electric already went up significantly this current year, so we're still battling that. Some of the challenges and budget risk, obviously managing a budget during inflationary time. Every item that we use, from curriculum software to textbooks, they have all gone up. And we have concerns about our skyrocketing utilities, cost of substitute. The substitute budget during COVID, most of the districts use ARP funding to have incentives. What's happening now in the region is we are running a sub-s shortage across the entire state and definitely in this region. And everybody is maintaining those incentives so that we can have substitutes for our children. Our special education population growth and the legislative changes. There are two legislative changes, the first being in pre-K and the age requirement, which will impact next year. And then the age at which students stay with us in our 18 to 22 for community connections. Our facility staffing overtime and kindergarten, again, uncertainty in enrollment. Some of the budget priorities. We want to keep us, we want us to keep GPS on track with our curriculum management plan. We've done a lot of work on that management plan. It's very important. Everybody has weighed in pre-K through 12, and we want to stay committed to that. We need to implement our special education action plan. We've made that commitment to our staff, to our families. We want to provide additional essential staff, and I'm going to say essential because it absolutely is to meet the mandates. We have legal mandates such as adding 1.5 preschool sections. Again, preschool is a federally mandated program, and we want to keep professional development fully funded. So this just shows you over time, again, going back to 2012, our school supplies, if you look at elementary, which is the blue line on the bottom, has stayed completely flat. But if you look at the beginning of that line, that really shows you the purchasing power when you apply inflation. We have not raised it at all. And in middle school, in fact, it went slightly down to get this budget to work at 2.9% this year. And the high school went down significantly to have a 2.9% budget. Next year, we are working in this budget to restore some of that funding for the high school. They need the funds. Some of the budget adjustments, and you'll notice it's a very heavy staff budget this year. We do have some reductions. We're trying to reduce one section in our K5. We are reducing 3.0 in middle grades in middle school, a reduction of 2.0 at high school. We are shifting 3.0 FTE, which is full-time equivalent, we're talking about staff, world language from K5, so that we can help in middle school for our English language population. We are adding the 1.0 cost Cobb co-teach model, which, again, this board's very familiar with. We're adding one position each year. We are have an addition of 1.5 in our pre-K teachers. And that's not only for eligibility and the number of students that are qualifying, but for that legislative change. We have the addition on the top right of 5.0 special education teachers. Keep in mind, two of those are already, one of them we're requesting as the interim right now, and that's going to the BET. We have a teacher, we need a teacher at ISD, and we also need another psychologist. We have so many evaluations coming in. We have strict federal timelines, and we have, we must be able to meet them. 2.0 school psychologists, we have 3.0 in social workers. The addition of our 1.0 financial analyst. And when we discuss the budget, I believe Mr. Levitton will be able to tell you what a difference that position has made in not only maximizing every penny of our grants, but it's having a huge impact. And then 0.5 for speech for pre-K. Again, when you add a pre-K section, you must also add those extra services, support services. When we look at the budget expense, again, the biggest driver that we have in this district is salaries, any school district. We're a people-driven business, so salaries make up 76% of our budget. You'll notice in that green, supplies are 3%. It's a very, very small amount. When we look at the salary expense, this is exactly how we want it to look. 92% of our salaries are out with people who work directly with children. And from an administrative standpoint, we have tried to get that lower and lower each year. We're down at 2.7% administration, which is low. And I encourage you, when you get the budget books tonight for the board, you know, read the budget letter because we go back through just even the last two or three years and all the positions that we've shifted and reduced, and especially from Habemire. Our transportation expense, 49% is our public school transportation. Of course, we have private school transportation that we pay for at 18%. And then special education preschool is the next largest amount at 24%. Operations and management, this just shows you how utilities are broken down. Our electric is the largest utility that we have at 68%. School lunch fund, the one thing that I would say about school lunch fund is the first year that I was here, it was well-known because it's the way the lunch fund had ran for years, that the town always had to assist us. We did not bring in enough revenue to actually be able to run the lunch fund. During COVID, that changed because we had the free meals from the federal government and high reimbursement rates. This year, we don't have that anymore, so it's likely we're expecting a deficit of 400,000 again, which the town, again, they should be used to that and know that that's coming. We do consolidate and coordinate so many core services with the town in Greenwich. And when you look, the green is where we're totally consolidated. The yellow is where we're coordinated together. We share software, we share, you know, snow removal. The parking rack takes care of our grounds, human resources. The town does a lot of our benefits for us, for our staff. Our legal is consolidated, print shop is consolidated, purchasing, we share service contracts, vendor list. We have one policy manual. We work really, really closely together and have a great relationship with our colleagues in the town. We have so many community partners in Greenwich, and we always want to take this opportunity every year just to say thank you, what they do for our students, for our schools, for our families. And this is everything from providing for families who are food insecure to helping families during times of crisis. It could be even rent assistance and connecting families with the appropriate services. But again, we're incredibly lucky that we have all of these organizations and nonprofits in Greenwich. So, the proposed operating budget. This year, we're looking at an overall increase of 6.5%. And when you look at that, and it's really broken down into these areas, the fixed costs, our salaries and contractual payments at 5.6%. Our special education, out of district and settlement, 16.9. Substitutes, we know we need $882,930 is what we're expecting to be short. We were short that much last year, and we may very well be that short this current year. Transportation, that's a contractual increase in the transportation contract. The utilities, overtime stayed flat for several years, yet the overtime, the people that work that overtime, their contracts keep going up. And we must increase overtime. And all other, literally $740,000 are lots of tiny things, but overall, that is what is, that's what's creating this budget, to have a budget based on needs. We also want to point out, this year, we expect the revenue to increase by 249,000. But our staff work incredibly hard on trying to also collect revenue. And it's a little bit different in Greenwich because most of the revenue actually flows to the town instead of to the school district. But that does not stop the effort of people trying to get that increase. And I want to just say on that very first one, for instance, special education excess costs. Dr. Holly Gentaller's worked really hard to try to collect every penny she can from the state at 1.8 million. So when you look at that from a revenue impact, along with our budget increase, it's really about 8.1 million, because all of that revenue is also going to offset this budget request with the town. So that is the budget for 24, 25, proposed by the superintendent to meet the needs of the school district. I'm going to say it one more time, to meet the needs. We have really pressing needs, and especially in staffing with the growth of many, many of our programs. So with that, I will say, we do have budget considerations that the board at our next meeting, and you can send questions ahead of time. We know that we have in our ARP funding a reading waiver, and the reading waiver is $800,000 sitting on ARP. We had our reading waiver meeting with the state, and it was fantastic. We feel very, very positive about it, and congratulations to Kim Palladino. She just did a phenomenal job. And we're hoping they will approve our waiver within the next few weeks. If that happens, we then could look at that 800,000 and see, could that offset something in the curriculum budget or something else in this operating budget? We also could have an adjustment to the preschool ratio. We could go from six to seven students. But again, that's a big conversation, and we want the board to be involved in that if we decide to do that. I also, for transparency, just want to say, ALP hours for science. We finally have ALP science where everybody wanted it to be. But there is a cost to that. It's $404,000 to maintain what we're doing right now. We want to reduce 1.0 district position. We're still working on that. We also want to just have some discussions about different outsourcing of selected services. And so those will be big conversations that will probably start at the committee level. Our next Board of Education meeting is November the 30th of 2023. And we look forward to working with not only the budget committee, but with the full board. Thank you. Sorry. I didn't want to kick it over.
Tony, do you want to just have some comments? You want to talk about how you want to do questions, like procedurally, budget questions? Just what document, how she want to receive input from board members? Well, no, you can, you can make a brief comment, and I like, should you choose to.
Yeah, so we don't usually take questions tonight because we don't have all of our information with us, and we want to give you thorough and correct answers. However, what I would say is that if you, when you get your budget books tonight and you start working through that, start sending your questions.
start sending your questions to me, and we will start collating them like we always do in a big document. And try to get those answers kind of as, as quickly as we can for the, for the discussion. I do know that, and Cody, you can speak to this. I believe we are going to be having a budget meeting fairly quickly when the new members are seated. So hopefully, we'll be able to do quite a bit of work at the committee as well.
Oh, by the way, I'll just jump in for a second. I forgot to tell you the BET did give me some guidelines. I forgot to mention them to you. Sorry. Just kidding.
Always the kidder. Karen Hirsch.
That was actually, it's funny that Joe mentioned, was what I was going to ask, because typically, as you mentioned, the BET in the past, I don't know, six, seven, eight, ten years, has their first meeting on their budget guidelines in late September, very early October. And they're almost, I, I've never, in the past six-plus years or more, they've been approved by mid-October. And so I was going to ask, we hadn't seen those. Have you gotten any indication? Because it hasn't been on any of their agendas for their budget committee or at all. So, you know, I know that makes it very difficult, because we have a short window here to turn around.
We, we need, we can't build the budget on guidelines after I've already presented the budget. I mean, we, as a board, can obviously go back, but we did not get guidelines this year. This is my fifth budget. Generally, we have them in early October, you know, second week of October, but we did not get guidelines this year. We always have a meeting, and we did do that early on with the budget, with Leslie Moriarty and Leslie Tarkington. That has been traditional the last couple of years, but we did, we did not get anything in writing at all.
Did anyone else have any comments or anything? I just wanted to say, this is kind of a bittersweet for Joe and myself, I think, as our last budget presentation. But I also think it's refreshing to see a budget that's presented based on the needs of the students as opposed to getting to a number. So while we won't get to participate in the discussion, I look forward to observing it as a taxpayer and former board member. So any other comments? Joe would like to say something as well, I'm sure.
On the same note of nostalgia, going through the multiple, many budgets that were presented to us. It's kind of strange where I kind of didn't know what you were talking about the first couple of budgets, and now know everything you're talking about, and I'm leaving. Kind of strange, but oh, well, hope the new ones pick it up quick, more quickly than I do. But thank you for being patient.
Karen?
If I'm not mistaken, both Christina and Joe sit on the Budget Committee, which leaves Cody and who else?
Laura.
So how are we going to fill that gap for the board purposes? Because we won't be.
It's a great question. I think, you know, if you want a suggestion, I think Joe, if you want to do an, you know, because we're both still technically on the board until the swearing-in. If Joe wants to appoint other members who are continuing on in our place, I think that might be the wise approach.
Well, that could be fun, so I'll consider that. I will, I'll contact everybody and find who wants to do it.
It's a conversation.
And I don't know, Christina will talk about it, and, but if it goes past the swearing-in, then it would be Karen who would make such decisions if we don't make them. So that, that's how, that's how I figure we'll go.
Hey, Joe, just as a point of clarity, technically, once the election happens, you are no longer board members. It would have to happen before then.
So you got like three days.
You told, Mike, you told me something different. Last time you said it was the swearing-in of the new members, because then.
I got a clarification from Town Legal.
You did. Okay, good. So it's after the election, the board then becomes less people. It's no longer eight people on the board. It's then six people.
And then does Karen become the chair? Karen Hirsch?
She would be acting chair until the board elects a new chair.
Did you know that?
Or time runs out.
Yes, I.
Yes, I told.
Well, I knew that, because state, state law says there's only, it's only the chair and the secretary. We have a vice chair as do most boards in Connecticut, and when, you know, and, you know, you guys are gone, then I sit in that role until we have an election.
That is also according to our policy.
But, but aren't the election results not certified for a week or two? So then it would seem that there's, that, that this immediate upon the election day.
But I think it's pretty clear that those that weren't on the.
No, 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 that's totally fine, but just in terms of board action, I'm just talking about like in the eight days. Technically, they're seated by, and, and sworn in by our, at our next, our meeting following election. I think it's a week or so after. So we'll have eight by the time we have our next meeting.
You know what? If I may, I'm going to get clarification from Town Legal, because if you look at the BET election, they remained in their position after the election all the way until January, of course. So, so I will get clarification from Legal. I'll get that tomorrow to make sure, Mike, I'm not questioning you. I'm just going to get clarification just at our end and make sure we have all that buttoned up, so we don't talk about it anymore, Michael.
I think the clarification is if, if it is the case that the retiring board members or no longer board members on the seventh are the elected board members, board members on the election, do they have to wait for the swearing-in?
They wait till the swearing-in.
Well, I know, I think that's a question for Town Legal, because that seems odd that we'd only have six members too.
I'll clear all that up tomorrow.
Yeah.
But, but we, we will want to have a budget meeting like right away. And so Blaze and I talked about waiting until the election, but whatever the legal answer is to allow. I mean, I guess we just need, we need two replacements, or Lauren and I are happy to assume dictatorial powers on the Budget Committee.
I like it, Cody. I like it.
Cody, I'll address that on Monday, find out who wants to do it, and then, uh, then either put them, put them on temporarily until the new chair is appointed, and that new chair will select all the roles.
Yeah, I just think for efficiency sake, we got to have a full Budget Committee to go through this.
My point was just more that two current members who are continuing could be temporary Budget Committee members, regardless of this whole legality of who is and isn't, just more like, you know, put your hands up, people. I was gonna say, it's also beneficial. I can take a look back and see what, what's been done in years past, because this is not, I guess, cannot be the first and only time that we've had retiring members who were on the Budget Committee. It's, it's, our, our timing is so strange, but.
Well, yeah, because when we were like four years ago, four of us came on, so clearly a bunch of the Budget Committee turned over. Remember, Joe, when you, Karen, Karen and I?
I do, yes.
All right. Any other business with Ms. Costin?
No, 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 one more thing if I may.
Oh, Joe wants to, okay.
No, no, I don't want to do that. There's a couple of things. I was going through, I spent the week going through all, all emails and see if there was any open business. There's two points I guess I didn't address directly to, to my colleagues. I thought I passed. Andrew Byrne sent over a note, which I forwarded to you, Karen. Did you follow through with that updated research for the pre-calculus and calculus course that he wanted to work with you on?
We had our first committee meeting today for that, for that textbook.
One more tick though, fantastic.
I didn't think we were doing a committee update, so.
Michael, I forwarded you Mark's email relating to the K-five social studies textbook review committee. I know, it was some time ago. I said that.
Yes, I said I would join.
So did you, Mark, there was no communications? What's that?
Ask me.
I asked Karen about the Andrew Byrne one, and then I left it to Michael.
I had them both, but I'm happy to.
You want to share?
Discuss.
Most important thing is it's off my plate. I am now finished with my responsibilities. That was the only open issues I had in reviewing all my emails and all the things left open, so I am done. Joe out.
Okay, Joe, I think I'm going to make, I've never gotten to make the final motion, and I'm going to, I know, that's why I said. I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second? Joe, all in favor? Eight zero, thank you all.